In discussion, we're setting 2:30 aside and we're going to go on with Bill 276-33. And Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after speaking with the sponsor of the bill, and she seems to be fine with the -- what I'm about to do, so I would like to move to basically replace what we've been discussing, the Bill 276-33 as amended by the author, and replace it with the Bill 276-33 as substituted on the floor.
So the motion will be to accept? No objections, and so ordered, and a motion now to play, Senator?
All right. Also being passed is a copy of the map of the lots that are in question. Madam Speaker, if you take a look at Bill 276, I think it basically incorporates all the discussions that we've had yesterday on the particular bill. So if you take a look on Page 2, Section 2, the first thing that the bill does on Paragraph A is we designate this certain lot, 5133-1-2, as a biodiversity conservation easement. The second thing that the bill does in Paragraph B is it identifies who the lessee will be that will be basically utilizing this easement, and that is James Walker Cushing and Barbara Beneventi Cushing, and their successors as provided in Section 21 GCA. So that concern was raised yesterday as to, well, what if the Cushings have now passed away, but their grandchildren want to continue the operation of this zoo? This then will address that concern. The third thing that the bill does, still on Page 2, on Line 26, is that it sets the term of the lease, the initial lease, at 30 years, at a rate of $1 per year. On Page 3, Line -- starting at Line 7, it establishes that the Cushings may elect to renew the lease for a second term of 10 years, subject to legislative concurrence, and after that first option to renew, another option to renew for 10 -- another 10 years, for a total lease term of 50 years. The fifth thing that the bill, that the substitute bill does, is the answers the question of, so what happens to this particular lot when the zoo no longer exists, or the Cushings are no longer the lessees? And what it provides for on Line 17 and Paragraph D there is that then this floating lot, 51-dash-whatever, 5133-1-2, will then become consolidated with the adjacent lot, which is the Matapang Beach Park, a public beach park. And so effectively, it will increase the footprint of the Matapang Beach Park by this 1,000-plus square meters. On Line -- on Paragraph E, the substitute bill provides the authorization that the zoo, the Cushings, may partner with a nonprofit organization, and that the lease shall not be sold, transferred, assigned, or subleased. The last thing that the bill does, again on Page 3, Section 3 there, is one of the difficulties, one of the challenges that the Cushings have had for the zoo is the ability -- putting up the signs. They tried putting a sign on the adjacent lot in the beach park, and some overly aggressive park ranger went over there and told them to take it down, and all that stuff. So we're basically, in Section 3, it expressly authorizes them to be able to install and erect a sign in accordance with a -- the zone -- the, whatchamacallit, the signage law that governs basically, you know, how the parameters of setting up a sign. So that, Madam Speaker, is the, really the gist of this substitute bill, and I think that it addresses all the concerns that were raised and all the discussions that we've had yesterday. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Munir Barnsheep -- I thought you raised your hand, I'm sorry. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? I know, Senator Spalding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the substituted version of the bill. It addresses a lot of the issues, and in particular, the legal issue of who the lessee will be, and because that would have, if we did not clear that up, that would have been a sticking point, not only for us and the ambiguity or vagueness of the law, but also may have provided some difficulties and challenges to the lessees, in this case, and the zoo. And that's really not what the intent of this bill was. And I know a lot has been said about all the efforts that the Cushing Zoo has had, has made towards the preservation of not only the fauna, but the flora as well, of our island. And they continue to do so. They work very closely with federal partners in some of the native species here, and they do so many good things for the island. So without further laboring the point, Madam Speaker, I just want to state my position on this substituted version, that it's definitely very supportable, and I support it wholeheartedly, and I appreciate for the amendments that were made in this substitution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Yes, but one -- one of you guys? Young man, young man, come up here. Young man. Our page, can you -- yes. Senator Munir Barnsheep, you're recognized, and if you may want to close.
Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to close, and I really just want to say thank you, and to the Oversight Chair, Senator Tom Ada, who really took the time with the committee, working closely with our office and his committee staff, to make sure that we truly realize that this zoo, for our island of Guam, is good for all of us. More importantly, at this time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to just make a motion, if I could make, Senator Tom Ada, second co-sponsor, and with your support, you, third co-sponsor. I know it's usually not done, but I think it's --
No worry. With my permission, Senator Ada will be second co-sponsor, and I will take third. No objections, so ordered.
With that, and I just want to thank the Cushing family, I know that --
One moment, is there, can we just take a moment, because I think Senator may have gotten some information, is there anything else?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, yes, you know, Mrs. Cushing is outside, and she just corrected that that's not James Walker, it's James Walter.
Oh, Walter, okay.
Walter.
Cushing.
A-L-T-E-R.
T-E-R.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I guess the motion to make that --
On that motion, then, for correction, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and if we move it down to the third reading, Senator Ozzy.
So on the motion, then, to send Bill 276-33 as substituted on the floor, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senators. We have a zoo. Okay. Two -- wait. 252, so, well, we're going to move on to 230, since we don't have the primary sponsor for 252. What happened? Where did she go? Two, can, Tom, can you please call the Senator? Yes, that's what I'm trying to get, I want to get the Senator coming first. 252? Oh, okay, Senator Ada, back here, where's she going? He walked, he walked out.
Madam Speaker, if I may, on Bill 252, I know that we were still looking for the numbers and trying to reconcile, but I want to say that we have a proposed amendment that we're working with legal on, so if you can just --
Recede.
-- bear with me, thank you.
Yes.
Is in session. We're on Bill 230, 276. 230, I'm sorry. Who had the floor? Senator Torres, you have the floor. You're recognized. 230. The floor amendment's being circulated at this point, you can start speaking.
Mr. Speaker, this is one of those situations where I think as policymakers, we are called upon to give measures our thorough consideration, and to enact on legislation that we believe is sound and reasonable, and which reflects the common goodwill and consideration of all the people of the island. And before we went on recess for lunch, I had spoken up about Bill 230-33, which is a measure to rename the Guam Museum to the Antonio Empolomo Guam Museum. And what I had done at that point is I spoke from the heart. Essentially, I was expressing to the body our need to take some pause, because as I was looking through the committee reports, and there was a letter that was submitted in testimony for the record by the wife of the late Honorable Antonio Empolomo. And the content of the letter gave me some pause to reflect on whether, in fact, the bill as presented is the way it should be, or if perhaps there is a compromise. And there were two things that I spoke about, from the heart, which essentially was not to discredit to discredit or undermine or diminish or in any way disrespect the good name or the honor of our honorable Senator Antonio Palomo. But instead, what I was trying to do was reflect on whether in fact there is a good place and a proper place for which to honor the good senator. I speak from the heart, Mr. Speaker, because the Palomo family is very near and dear to my family. Mr. Palomo was a very close friend of my father's. All of the Palomo children grew up with one of my siblings as well. We were classmates and we were just two streets away from each other in the village of Oka, Timuni. So of course, when I speak about the memory of the good senator, it is with sincerity and with the utmost respect. But where I was coming from was a place where as I consider the Guam museum and I consider all the things that the good senator did to perpetuate the cause of the museum, all those many years when we had no permanent museum, where we had a temporary museum, even at the mall, at the Micronesian Mall, he manned that museum himself. He brought his children there and his wife and they worked at the museum to make sure that there was always a place for people to go to see the limited, even if it was a limited artifacts, to see and experience that. So I understand his great contribution and I certainly want to honor him and have him have a place in the museum where we can recognize people like him who made some great contributions to our island and to perpetuating the history of our island. Where I was calling upon the body and I had hoped to have the whole body present to discuss this matter because I feel that the Guam museum is a one of a kind. There is, there will be no other Guam National Museum that encapsulates all of the collective, the official collections, artifacts, historical accounts, records, historical records in one place where it is preserved, where it is curated, where it is displayed, where it is articulated. The essence of who we are will be within the body of these four walls and the grounds. And with that in mind, as I was considering that and all the things that we had worked on, we, I mean the people of Guam, no one in particular, where we, the people of Guam, had worked on, I had thought about something that Mrs. Palomo had said. And the one thing that struck me was she mentioned that, that, that her husband was a very humble person and he would not agree to this idea of having the museum named in his honor. Perhaps she's had a change of heart and she did mention that at the public hearing. But what I was going to recommend to the body, and I have an amendment that I would like to proffer, is perhaps, yes, Mr. Palomo's name should be attached to this facility, this historic monumental facility that will capture the history of all our people, past, present, and future. But perhaps there is a more proper and fitting place to honor Mr. Palomo. It'll also give us an opportunity to honor all those good people who also supported the museum. As Mrs. Palomo very articulately mentioned and quoting from her letter dated March twenty-second, which is submitted as written testimony to Bill two thirty dash thirty-three, I quote, she says, "In addition, my husband worked with many good people who supported the Guam museum, such as past leaders of the Guam museum. He would want to ensure that they too are recognized for their invaluable contribution to the mission of the Guam museum." What I wanted to proffer to the body therefore would be a place for the Honorable Antonio Palomo's name to be affixed to the museum, a place that is consistent with other placements of very honorable people who have had great contributions to the causes such as the very honorable Speaker Ampinko, whose name is affixed to this legislative hall, to the Honorable Justice Lujan, whose name is affixed to one of the, to the Supreme Court, to the Supreme Court courtroom. So those sorts of things are very appropriate. They're very honorable and they're extremely distinguished. It would not be a disservice to the good senator's memory. It would not be an insult to his family. And I would, I believe though, that what it does is it preserves the pure name of what we were trying for decades to accomplish, to build a Guam museum. A museum para toru hita. So uno hananaan, inaani islahta, guahan, uno hananaan. Lo sinia tapega inaani is senado, is senor Palomo. Perhaps we can place the name of the good senator in the hall, the main exhibit hall, which would be very distinguished because this is the permanent hall of the fixed, of the fixed museum assets. That is, I believe, a high, high honor. And what I want to proffer is an amendment to Bill two thirty dash thirty-three. I believe copies have been circulated to my colleagues. Essentially, what this is, is it would be an amendment to line one, to page one, line five, lines five to fourteen, and page two, line one to two, where we would rename the main exhibit hall of the Guam museum, located in the capital city of Hagatnia. It shall hereafter be known as the Antonio and Palomo Exhibit Hall. The main exhibit hall of the Guam museum shall be renamed in honor of the late Senator, Guam historian, and author, whose public and private life was devoted to promoting the knowledge and awareness of Guam's history. All references to the main exhibit hall in public law are here, will hereby be amended to read in Mr. Palomo's honor as the exhibit hall. What I've also added was a section C, where it's very specific to signs and formal designation of the exhibit hall to include, and I think this is where we can ensure that his good name is clear and his contributions are very clear to anybody that should come through the museum, that a plaque bearing the name, picture, and brief history of the contributions of Antonio M. Palomo shall be affixed within a suitable spot in or near the main exhibit hall. Mr. Speaker, I don't know if this will be successful and I want to apologize to the Palomo family if in any way this amendment offends them. I assure them that in looking at what has been done historically in some of the most significant buildings of our island, such as the legislature, where we've named the main hall, or in the courthouse, in the hearing room, or we've named a hearing room in honor of somebody, it is quite a distinguished honor. Lo anginun hasu, idifuntu. I would agree with his wife, knowing the man that I knew, knowing his wonderful family, who I love very dearly, that I grew up with in the village of Oka all my life, that he would have wanted this museum to have the pure and simple name that bears our island, the island that he was so dedicated to and that he involved his whole family in his dedication. And I hope that my good colleagues can appreciate the sincerity in this measure that I'm proffering and support it because I think that what it also does is it gives us the opportunity in doing something like this to then honor in the future other people who we believe had invaluable contributions to the perpetuation of the museum. You will see, if you look at the face of the museum, the words of our great leader, who many of us never knew, are inscribed there, Chief Harrow's words, inspiration. So too, having an exhibit hall of the permanent exhibit honoring Mr. Palomo's name with a plaque, his picture, his history, I believe that's a good way to ensure that, yes, senor Palomo, you were appreciated, you were loved, and we will keep your memory forever as an inspiration to us now and to the future. The people who will never know you or meet you will get to know your great contribution in the form of the resolution that I have proffered. So I plead to my good colleagues, we have only one, one structure. Let it be a name that we all own. We all own the name of Guahan. Put for board. Consider estina amendment sa. Kinini kurusan who sentina maulek esti parahita, mas maulek esti kini otro. I believe that this is a very valid and reasonable request. Situus masi.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the Senator Torres amendment, any Senator wished to be heard? Senator Tony Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in objection of the amendment. And I think that it does take away from the memory of the late senator. When you go around our island and you look at the different parks, the different beaches, the different buildings, you don't see half a park named or a fixture at the park or pavilion named at the park after the individual that the park is named after. It's the whole park. We have schools that are named after individuals. We have libraries that are named after individuals. These are all a significant part of our, of our island and our culture. And I think when you want to take the name of the late Tony Palomo and you want to put him on a, on a room and recognize him in that manner, does take away from him. It does take away from his family. For an individual who so passionately ran that museum, and like the previous speaker said, the author of the amendment took his wife and his children and they helped with the museum, I think is an insult to them also. I did not hear anything on this during the public hearing and it was never brought up about naming a hall or a room after the late senator. And I think it should have been brought up at the public hearing about naming a hall or a room if that was the intent. And that is why, yes, Mrs. Palomo and Tim Margaret said my husband would not have agreed to this because that's how humble they are. At the public hearing, I asked her, I said, "Ante Margaret, Mrs. Palomo, are you in full support of Bill two thirty that names the museum after your husband?" She said, "Yes." So I think to turn around and take away from that and to give him a recognition on a little plaque above the door of the room. Go figure. So all these past times when we turned around and we named a park, we named a market, we named a school, it was wrong. We shouldn't have done it. This body shouldn't have done it. I mean, we got a building that was just introduced, that's going to name thirty-four buildings. And I signed on to that. So anytime we make an individual makes a contribution or is so given of themselves, of their family to what they believed in and what they, and then to take from that, I won't be a part of. And I object to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the Torres amendment, any other Senator wished to be heard? Senator Underwood. After Senator Underwood, any other Senator wished to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in opposition of the amendment proffered by the good senator from Senerita. But my reason for this is that the amendment is, you know, it's based in my belief that the naming of rooms or halls or significant portions of buildings really, especially the museum, should really be left up to the Board of Trustees of the Tomorrow Affairs, which oversees the museum. There are opportunities for funds to be raised that can go towards the sustainability of the museum, as they have done in other museums throughout the country. There are times when certain rooms would be named by a donor, after a donor who had donated. And so I just want to leave the opportunity for the naming of halls or portions of that, of the museum, to the Board of Trustees of the Tomorrow Affairs because now we're getting into what I feel the micromanagement of the museum itself. So my opposition to the amendment proffered by the good senator from Senerita is really based in my belief that the naming of rooms and halls or should be left to those who are in charge of that building. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other Senator wished to be heard? Senator Sniklis?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm mostly, most of the time, especially lately, focused on the numbers, on the money. But there comes a certain time when members of this floor will so move me on areas outside of the things that I focus on that I feel compelled to participate and contribute to the discussion. Because as oftentimes as I think about cost and numbers and making things make financial sense, I always do it from the perspective of reflecting on the sacrifices that were made by those who have sat in these chairs before us. And I sit here and I think about what would they want? What would they want for us to do in any particular situation? And I usually do that when it comes to questions of money. And usually something like a naming is a very simple process, you know? We all get on board and we say, "Yeah, we're going to go ahead and name, you know, something for somebody and honor them." Especially during, you know, this political season, it's normally the easiest thing to do. But the reason why I sit here and I reflect on what those who have sat here before us would probably think about is because I really believe- would probably think about is because I really believe, and this might sound a little odd coming from somebody who's so fixated on pluses and minuses, ones and zeros, is I really believe that those who have come before us channel through us when we really sit down and invoke them and invoke what they have sacrificed for to bring our island to where it is today. Oftentimes, I'll sit here and I'll think about our late colleague, Speaker Ben. But today I sat here, and I only briefly met the man. But I sat here and I really tried to, to connect with the late Senator Tony Palomo. And I sat here and I, and I tried to do that while reading the letter written by his wife. And I can see how, you know, perhaps it could be interpreted that she's writing this because the family's very humble and they want to just, you know, continue to be humble as this honor progresses forward through this house. But I sat back and I tried to ask myself, even just briefly meeting Tony Palomo and having his, having him really just, I mean, he was quite a presence. I asked myself, what would he want? Not what do we want? Not how do we read between the lines and try and interpret perhaps what the family wants? What would he want? And I think what he would want for us to do through all of this is to change the name from the Guam Educational Cultural Facility, which sounds so sterile, to something that he lived for and worked for his entire life. And it wasn't for his own building, it was for the Guam Museum. And so I think to myself and I reflect, and perhaps this is his way of reaching back into this house and telling all of us to name the building the way it's supposed to be named. Name that building the name that the people of Guam deserve to have it named as. Think of me, reflect on me, all the work that I've done, and give it the name it deserves. What would he want? What would he want? I think he would accept the honor of having a hall named after him, humbly so. I'm sure the family would too. But I think he would want that building to be named the Guam Museum. He dedicated his life to the Guam Museum. And it takes a really, um, I mean, you know, it could be really misinterpreted to, to try and rename the hall instead of the building, you know? It was stated on this floor that it's an insult to the family, which I don't think it is. I think if we all really reflect on the man and what he dedicated his life to, that's what he would want. You know, my, my grandpa, he was a speaker in this house. He was a three-time director. He would never want the Department of Education to be named after him. I don't think he would want anything named after him. That generation lived their lives and sacrificed to this island to lift up Guam, to lift up the people of Guam, to build a Guam Department of Education, to build a Guam Museum, to build the island and the people of Guam. I don't know the late Senator Tony Palomo intimately. I only met him briefly. But as I sit here today, I listen to the very moving reason why this amendment has been proffered. And I reflect on him and what he lived his life for. And I ask myself, what would he really want in all of this? He would want that to be named the Guam Museum. I feel that in my heart. So I support the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Reese Pieschel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Well, Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the objections to this amendment, I also rise in support of the amendment. And only to say that, you know, we're seeing a lot of things happening here in the city of Hagania. We're going through this major revitalization effort that's done not only in cooperation with the governor and with the Hagania Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, but also this legislature has done a lot over the past months, particularly over the last years or more so over the last months, to really restore the Guam Congress Building, which we're going to be, hope to complete contractually, it should be done by August, but hopefully it'll be done before then. I rise in support of this amendment and like the sponsor of this amendment, I ask us to really pause, take a pause to really decide if, if there really is a need to rename the Guam Museum after this individual who certainly is worthy of this distinction. But to take a pause and recognize that what we're doing for the legislature ourselves, you've, you know, over the years, they've been, there have been strong, a very strong push to rename the Guam Congress Building after many individuals. And there was even a bill several terms ago to rename the Guam Congress Building after the late Speaker Carlos Titanel. And also during that period, when we saw the passing of Speaker Ampico, the, the body at the time felt that it was more appropriate to name the Session Hall, the Antonio R. Ampico Session Hall, because this is really where the legislative action happens. The Session Hall is the heart of the legislature, and I think it was absolutely fitting to rename the Session Hall after the longest-serving Senator, and that's Speaker Ampico. Mr. Speaker, I rise to ask that we really reconsider this amendment. And I ask that this amendment to, to, instead of renaming the Guam Museum after the individual to, to recognize this Exhibit Hall, that would really be the heart and soul of the museum where the orientation is going to take place. I, I believe that we should support this amendment for the very reason that here in our own house, we're not going to rename the Guam Congress Building after any one particular individual, but we're going to instead provide that 1% set aside that's required under any, any project here on the island is to have a 1% set aside to, to do something. And what we're going to do is we're going to create a Hall of Heroes or a Memorial Wing or something to, to really have an exhibit that would recognize those legislative pioneers over the years that have contributed to the shaping of our island government and our island community. And so by adopting the Torres Amendment that removes, that keeps the name of the Guam Museum, the Guam Museum, and makes the Antonio M. Palomo Exhibit Hall, I think every single visitor that's going to go through the Guam Museum that first goes through this Exhibit Hall, the name will certainly be prominent. There would be a history of why the Exhibit Hall is named after this pioneer in our history of our island and the development of our island. So this amendment really doesn't diminish the role that Mr. Palomo played in building this museum. This amendment also recognizes, as the previous speaker pointed out, his wife's wishes that he certainly wouldn't have wanted something like this because of the kind of a humble man that he was. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm hoping that this amendment passes so that we can be consistent, so that we can be consistent in how we chose to handle our own house when this temporary building moves back to the Guam Congress Building. And so I hope this amendment passes, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, so that we're not having to rename the Guam Museum after one individual, just as we made the decision many terms ago not to rename the Guam Congress Building after any one individual, and that we instead provide some kind of honor and recognition to this individual, particularly in this case, this honor and recognition that this individual serves. I'm not sure if the mover has the aid votes for this amendment to pass, and I'm hoping that certainly it does. But whether this amendment passes or not, I also wanted to rise to recognize the mover of the amendment for her courage and wanting to put these things on the record, wanting to express exactly why it's more important to rename the Exhibit Hall, Mr. Speaker, and not rename the building after this individual. And so thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in support of the amendment.
Senator Frank Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Speaker, that's the great thing about this legislative process. It brings out all the great, you know, puts out the ideas and it's half of the discussion on this thing. I appreciate that. But more in line to the, to, to the amendment, I was proud to know Senator Palomo. Known him for many years. Think he knew me more than I knew myself. And it doesn't surprise me that he nor his wife at the time would be humble, as they are, and say, "No." But you know, Speaker, I look at all the buildings and the parks that we have named after people, and I bet you if we asked them, they would have said, "No," too. But I'm going to take this down a different road. I support the naming of the museum to the late Tony Palomo. Why? Let's be proud of our people. Let's be proud of the accomplishments that our people have had or have over the years. Let's honor them. Let's not be afraid of it. Because you know, as we do this, we tell the history. In the places that we go to, in the parks that we, we visit, I don't want to, you know, this gives us this opportunity. Let's be proud of our heritage and our tomorrows. We don't have difficulty when we name other places. Why? Because we're proud of them. Senator Tony Palomo Museum on Guam. I stand here in support of all the accomplishments of all the people that we continue to honor and that we want to give them that recognition. To our forefathers, to those that were before us that got the foresight, the will, the tenacity to stand up for our people, to want to continue to make sure, in this case, to make sure that our people, their, their legacy, their heritage, their history is never forgotten. So I stand here in the honor and the pride that I have in our people to say, "Let's be Let's be proud enough. Let's honor him." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator which to be heard? Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my father was a very special man. He was a great humanitarian. And one of his life's projects was to go on medical missions. And he would invite the top surgeons, the top plastic surgeons from around the United States, to go serve the poorest regions throughout Micronesia, the Philippines, and other parts of Asia. And I remember him going on one trip, in which, of course, he, and he would bring kids along, all the, his kids along, those of us that were on island and who were available to go with him. And on one trip, I was the only one of his children to go with him. And he did some incredible work, incredible work. And I remember, after watching his operations along with the, the good work of the other doctors who went on their own dime to work on these medical missions, I remember going up to him and said, and saying, "Dad, this needs to have coverage. We need to have the press here. This story's got to be told. It's got to be broadcast because the work you're do- you're doing is amazing." And of course, I would have to say, as an aside, that being young back then, I wanted to have my name associated with his name, and so maybe my name would get mentioned in the paper and press as well. And I went on for a few minutes of why and who, why this should be covered, who should cover it, who we should call, and bring all the press along with us on the next medical He sat there and he listened to me, and there was a moment of silence before he answered. And he said, "No. That's not going to happen." And I was kind of surprised because back then, he was in a political office, and I thought that maybe he would go along with this because that might even give him a little more exposure for the next election. And he says, "The reason why this is not one of those things is because I don't do this for the attention. I do it because it's my passion. It's what I was meant to do. I was meant to give back of myself for the cause that I, that God has given me to be able to help." And the reason why I tell this little anecdote, because it was very telling to me that he was correct. He was very humble. He didn't want the press because that wasn't the purpose of his mission. The purpose of his mission was to serve those that he could in his capacity as a physician, as a doctor. And one of our colleagues who previously spoke, kind of spoke to this also, in that that generation was not really about self. It was really about what they're meant to do in their life, what is their life mission. And I would like to think, even by the words of Senator Palomo's wife, that he was so humble, and he probably wouldn't want this museum named after him, that I would believe that he, who was a very good friend of our family and my father's as well, would probably say, "He did the work for the preservation of the history of this island and the cultural preservation and all that's associated with the museum, not because for the glory, but because that was his life's work. That was his mission." I believe that's what he felt he was supposed to do during this lifetime on this earth. I believe that's what he felt he was supposed to do during this lifetime on this earth. And so, the naming of the museum is really more of a policy call right now. Do we name the museum after him, or do we name the great hall inside where the heart and matter of the museum really is, after him? And again, I would like to, I go back again to the whole thing. I really don't believe that Senator Palomo did this with any intention to put himself out there to say, this is who I, you know, this is how great I am, or, you know, honor me. It was more to lift the people up, give them that recognition that there is a rich history to Guam, and everybody should know it, and everybody should share in it, and everybody should be proud of it. And it was not for his own edification. It was for the edification of the very people of this island. The issue before us right now is do we name the museum after him, or do we name the great hall after him? When I first heard of this idea, it was not in bill form. Actually, it was somebody who approached me to introduce a bill much like this, that would name the museum after Senator Palomo. And he gave me all the reasons why, much as has been stated by those who support this legislation. But in the end, I believe, much like the author of this amendment has articulated, that this museum is bigger than one man. This museum belongs to this island altogether. And we do, Senator Palomo, no disservice by not naming the museum after him, but we still do him a great honor, right, and show of respect for all that he's done to lift up the people and their awareness of their history by naming the great hall after him. Because I don't believe that he did this for his own benefit. He did this for the people of Guam. And that, in itself, might give us pause and reason to say, well, that's exactly why we should name this museum after the good senator. But again, I think that because he was contemporaries with my father, and having been in several conversations while both of them were engaged in the conversation, understanding the humility and the humbleness they approached their work with, with a heart of compassion and servitude, as opposed to self-edification, I believe he would be greatly honored that the great hall would be named after him. And I believe that, much like his wife said, this museum should be the Guam or the Guam Museum. With that, Mr. Speaker, I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, there's been an objection. Did you wish to close, Senator? No.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to thank everybody for contributing to this conversation. When we have this hard deliberation, oftentimes, we have to put aside personal feelings, we have to put aside personal connections, and we have to think about the collective good and the collective impression. And so, I want to, just as a point of personal edification, in no way, in no way, shape or fashion, would I ever disrespect or cause to hurt anybody's feelings, particularly a family that I grew up with and who my, my family has had a long history with. So, for the record, I just want to make that very clear. But this is just a sort of measure that is very consistent, very suitable to the type of honor that we want to pay by naming a hall, the main hall which will host the permanent exhibit, the heart and soul of the museum, after a man who devoted his heart and his passion and his family's attention to his cause. So with that, I just ask for your support, and I beg the indulgence and the forgiveness of anyone who I may have offended by doing this amendment, but I believe in my heart that it is really sound and it speaks to, to what we have been working so hard on as an island, to build a Guam museum that will be reflective of the people before us, the people now, and generations to come. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you very much. There has been an objection. There'll be a vote. All those in favor of... One.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldón. Senator Espaldón, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, nay. Senator Rispichio. Senator Rispichio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, pass.
There are eight ayes, seven nays. On the main motion. Senator Snick.
Just a point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker. The amendment that passed struck through the references to the Chamorro Educational Facility and referenced the Guam Museum. Would we need an amendment to formally recognize the name of that structure as the Guam Museum? Or would this amendment that already passed suffice to name it the Guam Museum? Point of inquiry.
That is... Please.
Maybe we should ask for clarification, Mr. Speaker, because I know that when we were first doing the museum, there was a reason why we called it the Educational Facility and that...
Yes, there was gonna be a USDA loan that we no longer went to. So the, the law does have Guam Educational Facilities, and so, this bill would do two things. It would rename the building, and it would rename the hall.
So again, Mr. Speaker, just a point of inquiry, because if there was an existing legislation that passed naming it the Educational Facility, for whatever reason, I don't think that there was a notwithstanding provision in the amendment that would cause the strike throughs and the subsequent reference to that building as the Guam Museum to therefore supersede that pre-existing law. So I just want to clarify, perhaps, of legal counsel.
Okay, well, I'll have to take a short recess. I'm getting conflicting advice from... On the amendment, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I can answer sponsor of the amendment, if, and consideration on the part of the body, if we can get the Chomora translation for Guam Museum, because I think that that would be very appropriate to put them, and codify them. Thank you.
I'll take a short recess. As is, and if there needs to be a Chomora translation, it'll be done at a later date. Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. On the amendment proffered, any, to correct the name. That's what is out on that plaque. Giant. On the amendment, Senator Tonyada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a point of information that, because the public hearing was for the Tony Palomo Guam Museum, doesn't we, don't we need a public hearing now for just the Guam Museum?
This is the amendment. Chair will recognize that this is an amendment to your bill. Is there a challenge to the ruling from the bench? Thank you. On the amendment, anybody wish to be heard? Any objection? Bill 230, on the main motion, Senator...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, recognizing the actions of the body relative to this bill, in essence, substantially changing what the bill is supposed to be on. And now, the bill, when it was presented, was to rename the facility as the Antonio M. Palomo Guam Museum. Now we're just saying, as a result of amendment, it's the Guam Museum. But it's two different things. So, as a result of the amendment, I don't know what it did to the bill, and as a result of the amendment, I don't know whether we could move forward on the bill. Because it's no longer, as a result of the body, a renaming of the museum to Antonio M. Palomo. It's renaming the museum now as the Guam Museum. Essentially, in the amendment, the body struck down the bill. So I look to your guidance on this, sir.
The chair is ruling that it was an amendment to the bill, rather than the Antonio M. Palomo Guam Museum. It is now just the Guam Museum.
Thank you, sir, but do we have that authority to do that at this point in time? Because the, it was proffered, and the public hearing is on naming it the Antonio Palomo Museum.
And the body by eight has amended it.
Yeah, amended it. So what it should go to, have to go back to, is to what it was originally stated. We cannot just change it. We can't change it, sir, like that. That's what I'm saying. It has to go, has to go back to that. I'd be very careful. We're going down a slippery slope with that, sir. We've changed the whole body, the whole body of the bill. The body of the bill, the question before the body, was do we change the name that it originally was to this name? Yes or no? That was the question. In the amendment, we decide, the body decided, no, we're going to make the halls this, and we're going to change, but then we're going to change the name to this. We can't do that.
The chair is ruling that the body has, and we have. Is there a challenge to the ruling from the chair? On the bill? Senator Tonyada, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair. You know, I guess this body just set a new, new precedent again. And I hope that moving forward, that this body recognizes its actions, what has just been passed, and that future buildings, and future parks, and future roads, and anything that is going to be named, be partially named and not just named. You know, I heard, and that's the beauty of debate, is that we hear both good and bad. And I heard every, every individual that stood up to speak, talked about how humble the family was, and if I knew Tony Palomo, he wouldn't want this, if I know the family, they wouldn't want this. But I look at Bill 230-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Libraries, and Women's Affairs, introduced by V. Anthonyada, F. F. Blas Jr. Nowhere there did it say the family's name. Nowhere did it say the family's name. And I introduced this bill because I believe that that recognition did belong to the late Tony Palomo. Just like when bills are introduced in this hall, to name schools, to name parks, to name roads, to name, to name things, that individual senator introduced it because they believed in that individual. They believed in why they were naming it that name, why they believed that park, or that road, or that facility should be named. It's not what the family wanted, not, probably not, any of those families wanted that. But we recognized it in their honor. We recognized it in their achievements. We recognized it in their works. But I guess now we just pick and choose which is good, to name after certain individuals or other individuals. Whether a whole facility, or half a facility, or just a room, should be named after an individual. Whether a whole park, or just one cobblestone in a park should be named after an individual. But that's all I heard today, was the family this, the family this, the family this, if I know them, they're humble, they, they didn't introduce this bill. Myself and Senator Frank Blas introduced this bill. Because that's what this body does, it recognizes. And that's what we do in this body. So I hope that the bill that was introduced to name all 34 huts will be redrawn, because we shouldn't be doing it then. And I hope, and I apologize to the family, if they're watching this legislative session thinking that, oh, it's, it's going to be okay, we're going to be okay. But to hear what comes out of this body. If we were to go back to every, every one of our colleagues that named a park, or named a road, or named a street, or a baseball field, or whatever it is, and ask them, do you think the family would have wanted that? Naming the Guam Museum, the Tony M. Palomo Guam Museum, does not take away from our heritage. It does, it does not take away what the edifice there is for. But for some reason, whatever the reason may be, eight of my colleagues on this floor felt that shouldn't be. Not for Tony Palomo. So I do hope in the future, that when you do decide, that someone comes up to you and asks if they can name a, a building or something after their, their, or you, you want to name something after someone, that it'd just be a, maybe First Base, or one of the stones in a park, or a water fountain, maybe. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And move down to the voting pile.
Send the bill down. Any objection? No, we'll recess until nine tomorrow morning.